So let's get rolling. Whoops, where am I here? Okay. Evening, everyone. A short agenda and then more code update. So call the meeting that order. And let's see, first is discussion ticketed events. We have the wine festival. For consideration, which is the event dates August 7th and 8th. Thoughts?
Excuse me.
Is Laura on?
I think Laura was coming, I believe, but I don't know. I don't see her.
Well, what's everyone's feeling on this?
The same event that we talked about in the in the fall at Mayor's Park with the food. I'm not at the fall, but we talked about it in the spring and we delayed.
Yes. This is. This is the wine festival that Laura did two years ago.
That the event day wasn't, I thought it was in later than August 7th and 8th, though. Is that have they moved that up or was that always the date?
That was always the.
I don't remember.
Jeff, what this was the only date they identified?
Yeah.
Okay, and and it's a food and wine, not just wine.
You know, I know when they when they came to talk to us before Lauren had a very specific plan of letting people in in like certain hours, certain groups. I don't know if she's still planning to do that. I see that she's estimating 1,000 people. I thought it was like three hours for 300 people and then and then another three hours, something to that effect.
That's what I recall too, that it was like a phased.
Yeah.
Phased phased movement through, so it wasn't as dense. Trying to find that reopening. There it is.
See, I thought that she needed a couple of months and if it was August 7th and we were going to decide in June, that's really not giving her a couple of months. I could have sworn it was in October, but.
Well, she had asked it be moved up right from June to May, the discussion on it.
Correct. Right. Yes, that's to move it up to now.
Yeah.
So the I'm looking at the guidance document that Sean Rogan sent today. And it's not, there's not very clear guidance on outdoor dining other than distancing. I mean, the difference between, obviously, the difference between this one and a restaurant is people are moving around. But I mean, she talked about having tables. I just don't know how you make sure folks stay at tables at an event like that.
Okay, so since she's not here and we're just speculating, I think we definitely consider it. I think she needs to, you know, come before us with the plan and let us know how it's going to work and come up with a you know, I think Rec has a COVID plan they came up with and ask her to submit how everything is going to work. I mean, I don't, we don't have it here and so we can, like I said, we're just speculating. So why don't we see if she comes on before we get to code or we can even let her jump on or whatever, so we can move things ahead. But for now, let's I guess question is how does people feel regardless of how it's handled, having having, you know, a larger event in August?
I'm comfortable with it at this point. It seems that the regulations have relaxed a bit on outdoors. You know, whether or not, you know, the question of whether or not you ask people whether or not they've been vaccinated is a little insane to me. So maybe she may need to keep everybody having masks. And I think she wanted it 300 and then 300 or 500 and then 500. But I'm, I think we need to start moving towards opening it up a bit, so I'm comfortable with doing it, not 1,000 people at a time. But other than that, I feel like it's good to go.
Marie?
Yeah, I agree with Fran.
Kathleen?
I I agree. I think that traffic, thinking about traffic pattern for how how folks are moving through the site as they're eating would be good to know about as part of her plan.
Okay.
So maybe unidirectional or something that that limits a lot of mingling back and forth. But at this point, I think Fran and Maria are right. It's becoming safer, thank God.
Three.
I agree. I think it's it's time to to look towards opening things up. I mean, I also think that we have to probably be pretty nimble, just in case things hopefully don't go backwards, but you know, how we respond if if God forbid, if things get worse. Now that we're reopening the way we are, but I think we should do it.
Okay. All right. So well, hopefully she can pop on or if not, we can schedule our next meeting or whatever and tell her we're definitely willing to consider it now. And so speaking about things going back to normal, I'd like to go back to office meetings. I'd like to hear people's feelings on that.
Meeting in person.
Live meetings. Definitely for our board. I guess each board could decide. I want to get back to live meetings.
I'm good with it. I am. How do we control, like if we have a topic that everybody's been, everybody's interested in, how do we control the crowd? Or do we move those type of meetings back to Zoom? Yeah.
Yeah, if we, I think we would have to anything like we're having a public hearing or anything we know people are going to come to or public meeting, which we I think we're having scheduled. We would either do that Zoom or we can talk to Phillips Town about using the Rec Center. They have a huge space down there that was set up and had all the separations and or you know, even the firehouse might be too small for, you know, any kind of hot topics.
Bell and Town Hall is open now too. And wasn't it, I can't remember if it was Bob who said it, that maybe not someone, someone said, you know, use the space. So I don't know. I don't know what their meeting schedule is, but maybe if there were particular nights that we could schedule around them if we had a big meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the office for our regular meetings.
One of the problems with the courtroom is the Plexiglas shields inhibit good audio transmission, vocal transmission, number one, and number two, Wi-Fi.
You know, are they passing to the top or are they sitting there?
I think they're sitting there. I think they're, I think they're screwed to the to the the dais.
I think they're removable. I think they just sit there.
Yeah, I do too.
Oh, really?
On stands. Yeah.
I don't think they would have.
So now, if we if we were to do that, we wouldn't, if we were to go to any, any onsite service, we would need video.
Right.
Yeah, Marie, are you thinking about doing? At some point, there was conversation about simulcasting, but I don't know if that's in, is that what you mean?
No, no.
We do not have, we do not have the capability or the technology.
Just a way.
Broadcast, whether it's just audio or video out from the courtroom.
So what's the Wi-Fi concern? Yeah, I don't get any service either, Marie.
Yeah, it's, I think the other question, we have to check the executive orders. If we meet in person, I'm not sure if we need to have the capability to let people participate remotely.
Got it.
So let me, we check that first and then do one more next week via Zoom and I need to, I want to make sure that we can do it.
Right. Okay.
Do it in conjunction with the executive orders.
Can can we also, can we also, can we also check on the Wi-Fi there?
There is none. We know what, we know what access is like back there. It's pretty, it's non-existent.
Right. And and when we do code review, it's mandatory. We've got to have Wi-Fi.
We can, and this, you know, something that Michelle I've been talking about. You know, Anthony has given us a proposal to put in access points that would enhance Wi-Fi in three spots throughout the building. The courtroom, the police station, and then one in the hallway that will help in the office and the small conference room. So there's, so there's, there's labor and there's hardware involved. It's not cheap, but.
Just gonna say, and there's a price.
Yes, there is a price. Michelle, I don't remember what.
The, yep, so the labor up to maximum labor and the equipment, the hardware, the max would be 4,400 for the two of them. If they don't have, if they use less labor, then they always they're good about not charging the full amount. But the hardware itself is, you know, the 22, it's about half of it.
Is there any any way we can get it done before the end of this year? Which gives us a week and a half.
I know that we could probably order the equipment if long as it's not on back order, but I don't know about the labor that we'd have to speak to Anthony about.
It would be helpful because that's always an issue back there.
Yeah, and make everybody more efficient, for sure.
What would be impossible to do the code reviews without?
Impossible. That's why, that's why Larry and Vinnie and I have been working on paper. Because we just can't get a signal back there to log on. And then I go, I go home and update online later.
So Michelle, if we we can, if we put the place the order, can we fit that in this year or no, or does it have to be completed?
Michelle, you're on mute. You're on mute.
You're on mute. Sorry, yeah, I was trying to get, as long as the stuff's not on back order, we could place the order, you know, say tomorrow and at least try and guarantee half the cost as long as the, you know, it is 4,400. So the board would just have to, you know, be okay with spending it based on procurement policy. And then we could start moving forward with it tomorrow and reach out to Anthony and see how long it'll take.
Do we have the money? Do we have the money to do it?
We do.
Would that, are we pretty sure that's going to take care of the problems back there or is that just a, a bit of a fix?
Jeff?
I, I could ask Anthony, I mean, my assumption is that that would take care of the problem.
It's got to help.
It works for me. I mean, I'm okay with it.
I'll have a conversation with Anthony in the morning just to verify.
Okay.
Some kind of warranty or guarantee in that proposal about it.
I think.
I'm pretty sure you're right, that one would go actually in the courtroom. So I would assume, but we will talk in the morning.
Yeah. There was, yeah, there was three spots. I think he was talking about three of them. The courtroom up front and then upstairs.
Okay, is everybody good with that expenditure?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so follow up, see if we can get, well, make sure that it there's no like 50 50 chance that we're going to have Wi-Fi back there. All right. Thank you. Okay, next is the update on the garbage truck. As as everything, nothing's simple and everything's complicated and everything takes forever, but so you guys can correct me or stop me if I'm wrong here, but we order the garbage truck. And then because now parts are very scarce and having, there's a lot of production problems. We can't get the garbage truck that we had specked out until December. Is that right?
Um, no, it would go into production in January.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. So then the other option was, and I don't know if it's still an option, this is a week ago when I talked to Michelle. They have four trucks that are in production. And they would hold one of those for us. They aren't exactly how we, what we expect, but they should work. I think Bugsy can talk about that. I think the brakes and some other smaller details that we wanted upgraded wouldn't be included there. So that's an option. We have to do that quickly. Then we are purchasing this and it's, it's kind of distant, that would be receiving a truck. We, Marie and I have contacted Royal again and we've worked with Bugsy because one of the trucks, the existing truck, the only remaining truck needs to be taken off road for probably a week because there's oil leakage and they're, they're trying to determine where that's coming from and also assess rust on the on the truck. So we'll need someone to to take over the route for at least a week. And we've contacted Royal, who have given us a quote on that, which Marie can give us that if she has that handy. And so one option, so the option is, well, it's not really an option. Need to take the truck off the road. Royal is one of the only games in town. They've done our route before. We might even be able to get Bob who drove the last, drove for us for, for a while to do the route. We have to supply two guys for the route. And they will, they'll, and they've agreed and set things up and Bugsy's done quite a bit of legwork. Thank you, Bugsy. And we have scheduled, I believe, next week. Again, you guys can verify the the dates for that. Also, since all this is going on, Marie and I have reached out to Royal again and asked them to give us a proposal to take over garbage totally, which would eliminate our problems with trucks and service and so on and so on. So there's benefits to it, but last time we went through this, we'd never got a proposal from them, a formal proposal, but kind of working with the numbers they were throwing out there. It seemed like it was going to be way too much or much more than we are spending right now and having our guys do it. But we're meeting on Thursday, next Thursday, Marie and I with with Royal to discuss and hopefully corner them and get a proposal from them and see what the costs are. So that's kind of the update where you can talk about costs and Bugsy jump in with what's needed on the existing truck.
So Michelle has arranged for Wheel O'Brader to charge us directly for the garbage next Tuesday. We need the Royal truck number, correct? For that? Okay, so I'll follow up with Royal on that unless Bugsy, might you have that?
Might I have the truck number?
Yeah. Okay, I'll follow up on that. Recom, have we arranged with Recon so that we'll pay the Friday recycle drop off?
I emailed them. I have not heard back. I will follow up.
Okay. So the cost for us to use Royal next week is $1,500 a day plus garbage disposal at Wheel O'Brader and recycled disposal at Recon, which seems to me it's going to be in the close to $4,500 range for that one week. Both garbage disposal and recycling disposal. And if you straight line that, it comes out to a big number for the full year. So we'll be very anxious to find out what they're, what they're going to propose to us.
Bugs, can you tell us what's up with the existing truck?
I've had the existing truck up at Riverview Industries, Kevin Riker's facility. He is the one who was going to swap the body on from the old truck to the new truck. We have a little bit of rotting out issues under the body. He has welded in three brand new supports. He has two to do on the other side. And we have some small holes about the size of a plum in the floor of the existing garbage truck. Probably three or four of them, nothing major, major, something he can definitely fix. We do have to seriously consider putting a new fuel tank in it. The hydraulic pistons on the sides, which lift the whole back of the body up to shoot out the garbage that you've collected. Both of those are leaking and the two smaller ones, which operate the door to come down and scoop it up into the truck when you dump in the hopper, both of those are leaking as well. That's not something that's going to happen in a day or two. It's either you're looking at buying one brand new piston, replacing one of the old ones and the one that you replace rebuilding that one, which could take up two, three, four weeks depending. There's only one company around who does it.
Will the, once it's done, will the, will the truck be roadworthy from an inspection? I assume it'll be roadworthy from an inspection standpoint.
The hydraulics have nothing to do with it passing an inspection.
Well, the brakes.
The brakes are good.
What was, what were we just saying about brakes, though?
Nothing.
Oh, no, it was, it was Dave saying the difference between the truck that could be available and the truck that you wanted. Sorry.
Yes. Yeah, the fuel tank would definitely be an issue as far as inspection. And the, the rot in the body, which I am currently is halfway through getting taken care of, would be another issue. If you're looking on, you know, getting rid of garbage, which at this point I'm all behind you. You know, there are going to be Sundays pickups. We pick up the cans on Main Street on Mondays, Fridays and Sundays. These are all things we're going to have to factor in with Royal or whoever we get to do this, if we do this. You know, it would be wise to keep a garbage truck. Whether you would want to keep this one or get rid of this and get one of those very small basically pickup sized ones, because if somebody does take the garbage, you're only going to be looking at if there's dumpsters that they can't take or don't want to take the cans on Main Street and also brush collection.
But you've got brush collection covered now.
As of right now, loading it into the garbage truck and bringing it up to West Hook.
Oh, I thought you were taking it into an open truck. Okay.
No, no. If I was to use an open truck to take care of brush in the spring and in the autumn, you're probably looking at anywhere from five to 10 loads up to West Hook because the garbage truck compacts it up.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and what you just described as needed repairs is in addition to the appointment that you have with Hatfield next week.
Correct. There are other issues with the garbage truck. The AC does not work. There are electrical issues, which I would have to bring to an international dealer, which is Arkell across the river.
What is Hatfield?
Hatfield Brothers, they company that repair, works on trucks. They are right at the top of Fishkill Road.
Oh, right.
I've used them for the three years I've been in charge now and I've got nothing but great results from them.
So what, what work would they do?
They could do the air conditioning. They could drop the fuel tank. As far as, you know, the electric work, that would have to go to Arkell. The welding of the body and making the supports better is something I would trust with Kevin Riker at Riverview Industries.
Bugsy, do you have any round figure of how much all of this is going to cost us? Besides the price of a new truck?
With a fuel tank, just a rough estimate, you're probably looking at about 800 to $1,000 for a fuel tank, probably another 500 to 1,000 to install it. I don't know what Kevin's going to charge me as far as welding in the supports on the bottom of this. I have yet to receive a bill. He's going to wait to bill me for when all three, when all three are done on one side, the two on the other, and he gets the floor done. But I'm probably thinking maybe two to three grand at most. As far as the electrical, it could be something, excuse me, it could be something very simple. We, the, the electronics on it go absolutely haywire. It'll start flashing. It's rare it happens, but something's going on in there. As far as the AC, you know, I mean, it does sound like a creature comfort, but when sitting in that truck and a large diesel motor running in front of you, I have pictures of the old garbage truck when I was driving it and the AC didn't work. It was 138 degrees in that cab with the windows open. It gets a little hot, so that whether it has to be completely replaced, we know it's not just adding freon. Or if it could be rebuilt, you're probably looking at about two to three grand there, depending on which way it goes.
So $10,000.
Roughly, yes.
Yeah.
And there's no way he'll give us an estimate unless we just bring it to him and we're at his mercy? How do we work this?
I I can ask for an estimate, but it's it's kind of, he doesn't know exactly what is wrong with things, like with the oil leak. He has to get that in there. He has to completely steam wash that motor to find exactly where the leaks are coming from. So could it be just a gasket? It could be. Could it be that the, you know, the block has a crack in it? We don't know until it's, unfortunately, it's in there.
But the other thing is not that, but for the replacing the fuel tank.
Fuel tank and stuff, yes, I could probably get a much firmer number.
Reflecting hydraulics. I think you mentioned maybe the welding. I don't know. Be good if we can get some type of an estimate. I know he's not, he can't give anything for the.
No, but I'll get, I'll try and get him to get me something rough.
Okay.
Bugsy, how old is this truck?
How old is this truck? It's a 2003, so it's 18 years old.
Okay.
It's like most 18 year olds, it acts up.
It gets better with age.
So Bugsy, Bugsy, it sounds like our best course of action, other than, I mean, we've got to repair what we've got. But getting the new truck sooner rather than later would be the best course of action.
If that's the route we're going to go, yes. You know, if we're looking to get rid of garbage, I would strongly recommend putting it out there. AAA carding is biting at the bit to get Village of Cold Spring. Whereas, and I know Royal is not a fan of wanting to do cold spring here. I've heard it from many people.
Where's AAA located?
AAA, I believe, is right over in Carmel and there's also one down in right in Westchester, right across the Putnam border.
They are on New York State contract, just like Royal is as well.
Okay. I can reach out to them tomorrow. Do you have a contact name?
Any other municipalities that you, sorry, I guess there's a delay here, something. Your internet connection is unstable.
Yes, it is today.
So nobody has any contacts at AAA?
No, I can, I can have it to you by 8:00 AM tomorrow morning.
That'd be terrific. Thank you.
And do you know if they service any other municipalities like Royal? We have, they have a track, a long track record with people, so.
I can, I can find out as well that information. Okay.
AAA does like May, Pat, Carmel, and I think Kent.
The eastern side of the county, that's what I'm, yeah.
I mean, they're already, Royal's already doing Nelsonville. It couldn't be incorporated into a root day that they're here, that they're over in this village area anyway? What, what's the reason that they don't want to do cold spring?
I just, I couldn't honestly give you an honest answer for that, but I know I have heard from people who have worked there who have said that Royal really doesn't want to do cold springs garbage.
Well, maybe if they hear that AAA is bidding. Who knows?
Okay, so find out again. Let us know as soon as you can.
One last question. As of now, Royal's picking up in the Village when? Next week?
Tuesday and Friday.
Tuesday. Okay, so I want to get that up on on Facebook so people know the Royal truck coming down the street.
Yep. 25th and the 28th.
And Bugsy, can you refresh me on the, how we work it? So Tuesdays, we go out and we do the garbage jobs, but we don't get the dumpsters till the next day?
Monday, Monday morning, we pick up the cans on Main Street and the dumpsters.
Okay.
Tuesday is garbage, Wednesday is brush pickup, when it is brush pickup that week. Thursday, we are off, Friday is recycling and also again cans on Main Street.
We, sorry, just back up to Monday. So what we collect Monday, we don't bring down to, we don't, you know, we don't drop it off in Peak Scale, right?
Or? Yes, I do.
Right. What's that?
I have to drop it off.
Oh, okay. That's what I wasn't sure of. I thought you.
There's, the truck's not big enough to hold all the dumpsters, the cans on Main Street, the cans on Main Street from Sunday and then all of regular garbage on Tuesday.
So it, so how do we, how are we going to work this next week with Royal if they're just giving us two days? Can they actually do, would they have to make more than one run, which I don't know if they've given in the price it sounds? I think they said it was one run each day. I'm not sure. But it would be more than one run for their truck as well as ours.
Some of their trucks are a little larger than ours. It also depends on how new their pistons are, their hydraulic pistons. When we first got that 2003 truck, we were able to put 15 tons of garbage in there. The most we can put in now is about 10, 11, and that's really stretching it. The, yeah, I'll start to wear out on them. They're not as strong. See, I'll start to wear out on them. They're not as strong.
Okay, so can, will you find, can you find that out or uh somebody has, can you talk to Royal and see how we're gonna work that? I mean, we have to.
I'll give Royal a call tomorrow. I guess we have a meeting on Thursday, you were saying, correct? Next Thursday. So after they've already done garbage, correct? All right, I will give them a call tomorrow. And um, I'll see. If they have a truck that can handle roughly. We're probably looking at about thirteen to fifteen tons. Between dumpsters, cans on Main Street and the regular residential garbage.
And the dumpsters, we, do we do them manually or how, how do you, how do you guys work that?
There's um, the two, the metal bar in front has ears out the side. It hooks to the back of our truck. A cable comes down, hooks to the bottom of it, and it dumps it up and in.
And will Royal have similar or no?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Bugsy, do you have the name, the name of the contact at Royal?
Um, I believe it was in the email that you guys.
Right, it was in the email.
Okay, I will reach out to him tomorrow and I'll get what I can from him. Um, I will try and get you information as soon as possible. Unfortunately, I have. Brush pickup tomorrow and yeah. Soon as I'm done with that, I'll, I'll get on it and get information to you.
Okay, what are you, what are you using this week? What are you using for brush and for recycling this week?
Uh, the existing garbage truck.
So it's still being driven?
Yeah, unless you want me to ride around in my uh Ford Taurus and put it all in my pocket.
Well, I mean, I was confused because it sounded like we were saying it wasn't roadworthy, but we're driving.
No, you're the only one who said it isn't roadworthy.
I'm asking, I'm not saying, I'm asking, is it roadworthy or not roadworthy?
It's, it's good enough to get around the village and do what we.
So we're fine, we can get through this week, but next week, when it is with. Uh, Hatfield.
It'll be, the oil leak issue will be addressed, yes.
Got it.
Michelle, what's the latest? We can give them an answer on the smaller truck.
It's, it's not a smaller truck. It's just different brakes, I guess. It is a different model chassis. So the. What's going on here is we would still have to put it out to bid. And then Gabrielle would have to bid on it. They would have to still be the lowest. And then we would have to award it. So you're still looking at paperwork. You'd have to first reject the bid that. We're sitting at for January. And I haven't talked to Gabrielle since last week. Um, and they said that they were going to hold a slot, but if somebody comes in and they're ready with cash in hand to buy a truck, they're probably gonna sell it to them. So it's, it's a little bit of a gamble. Um, I don't know enough to know if like if. Just how much, how long he's gonna hold it for, I can ask him, but I can't see them holding it indefinitely. Um, they have a business to run too. But I would hate to cancel it, pull it out of the January production, and then what if we don't get the September production? But it, the September one would give us a truck in December roughly. The January one wouldn't give us a truck until April, and that's what they're saying now. Um, but who knows what's gonna happen by then. The one in September has a chip. That's the problem. There was no chip. Um, that's why it's being put off to January. But I'm talking with, you know, the sales manager there, not just the sales guy. But I, it's really with the board and, you know, Bugsy, what we wanna do, but we have to make a decision soon.
Well, it's um, do you think you could ask them if we could wait till next Thursday? We can meet with uh. Royal, see if we can get at least an idea and whether we go with them or not. But, and just at our meeting Thursday, or if we don't have one, we should and uh. And discuss it and what, what the costs are gonna be and how we would have to, what we'd have to do with our current. Staff, uh, crew. Um, I think we have to downsize one to make it even, to make it. Close to working. So there's, there's a number of things we're gonna have to talk about.
Bugsy, would that, would the September slash December truck be, would it work for you?
I can make anything work you need. My biggest issue with that current truck. Is that oil leak. That is, that is my main concern. The piston's leaking, is it, you know, it's. It's a pain in the butt, yes, but you know, we still function fine with it. The truck, safety wise, is good. It's, it's a solid truck. The oil leak is my biggest concern right now.
But, but the, the, the question was, uh, we have the possibility of one of two trucks. The, the truck that meets the specs, which is a January, April truck, and then. A different truck, which is a September, December truck. Is that September, December truck an acceptable one for you? Uh, Michelle mentioned the brakes.
The, the brakes, um, cuz I specked this out with Kevin Reichardt. Um, he is phenomenal when it comes to trucks. He uh. I spent two hours with him on a Saturday. And he didn't charge me a dime to go over this truck. He recommended the higher brakes. Um, if we get a truck with lesser brakes from this company. They're not gonna sell us something that the brakes are inadequate for what we do. They know what we're doing with it. They will work. Will they wear out faster? It's a good possibility, but they are acceptable.
Okay, thanks.
And what, were there other differences or was that the main difference?
I think that was the main difference. The only other one was uh. The batteries um outside the cab or batteries inside the cab. Um, and the only really difference that makes is, A, you'd have to place them in a spot. That is proportionate for putting the old body on the truck. Um, and that's about it. So yeah, the brakes were probably the only real. Spec change that would have made it, you know, could make any difference.
Same brand, same motor, same transmission, same chassis?
Um, I'm assuming. I haven't seen any spec changes from Gabrielle yet.
So the chassis, we specked out a T three seventy. A T three seventy cannot accommodate the brakes that were specked out according to Kenworth. So Gabrielle said, let's go to a four thirty or four forty, sorry, a four forty. So the four forty is a different chassis, can accommodate the higher brakes. Um, but Gab really wasn't gonna charge us for the difference in chassis cuz it's a, it's a grade eight truck instead of a grade seven or something like that. So the one in September. Is going back to the original chassis that we wanted, so it is different than the bid we awarded, which is why we have to rebid it. But the brakes is the biggest thing, and then Gabrielle would have to give us a spec sheet. And we would have to approve it, um, which they were supposed to be working on. So that they know best what can be built in that September slot that they're holding. It's definitely a three seventy. Definitely the same length that we need for the existing Cobra, cuz those are the two big things that I asked. The weight requirements, uh, might be like a few cosmetic differences, but it. Overall, it would have the weight and the length, which is what we need.
Okay, well versed in that, Michelle.
Gabrielle way too many times.
Um, from a process standpoint, we passed a resolution back in January. Accepting the bid, so we would need to pass another resolution rejecting the bid. And then go back out to bid and a bid process and then again pass a resolution accepting a new bid.
So what's that look like? Timeline. Wise, just can, can we, does it work with the September order?
The September order would require a new bid. The January order would really, we've already done. The um. The formality, we've already passed a resolution.
So, but what is, what would be? What would be the timeline for doing the bid so that we could? Can we do the bid in time? For the, the seller's timeline? It sounds like they're under pressure to sell, right?
Yes, so I can ask them what their latest deadline is to, you know, I'm gonna reach out to them cuz we need to know about that slot. Um, but at this state, um, you can request a shortened bid, like a five day or a ten day instead of a twenty-one day. So if we did a five day and Gabrielle knows that it's coming out. They would be more inclined to bid on it, but there's always that option that somebody's going to come in under them, and then we're dealing with a whole of their dealership too. And then we're gonna be dealing with their timelines as well.
Put, put it together. I mean, I will try to uh get it together by next Thursday.
And that's the earliest Royal could meet with you?
That's what they, uh, we asked, and then that's what they told us.
Well, let's hope nobody buys the truck.
Alright, thanks Bugsy. We'll get you some, do you, do you have any idea what the smaller ones uh cost, those you had referred to?
Guys of Louis Lombardo's? I would probably say rough estimate fifty, sixty thousand, maybe a little more. Steelers out on that as well.
Okay, yeah, if you can find out, that'd be something good enough.
Alright.
Alright, thanks.
Have a good night, folks.
I just, I spoke to Anthony a few minutes ago, so he said yes, the, the access extenders will solve. The Wi-Fi problems in the courtroom, in the police station up front.
What was that editing quote here, Jeff?
I spoke to Anthony. And he said, yes, uh, get the access points, the extenders. For the courtroom and upstairs will solve the Wi-Fi problems. These areas.
Okay, great, thank you. Tomorrow came quickly.
Why text him and call me back? He has a new baby dog that was. In the background, that's just about a week old.
Okay, is there anything else? Laura or from the uh Wine and Food Never Show? No, okay, well. We can maybe reach out to her tomorrow, Jeff, and ask her to kind of, to join us. Our next meeting.
For next Tuesday.
Alright, um, any uh public comment to this point, um, then we'll get into uh. Well, do you wanna talk in code review, talk about the short term rentals, or do you wanna talk about that now separately?
Well, don't we have the um letter of agreement first?
Oh, yeah, I, I couldn't find the other. I'm sorry, I, I couldn't find the updated. Agenda, so what do we have next? Sorry.
The Chambers Letter of Agreement.
Right.
For the restrooms.
Okay, um, well, my comment is I, I think that Marie had sent a red line of, of how it should be rewritten. I think it should be a formal on Chamber Letterhead um agreement. And I think that the changes Marie uh put in there, I, I should, I think should be incorporated. Did you send those to everyone or?
I sent, I sent them to the war, the board. I did not send them to Eliza.
I agree that they were good changes that Marie made.
Yeah, I think we, we need to wait for a corrected letter.
Okay, so we will get that message to them?
Eliza's on the call. Eliza, or she had been, yeah. Uh, Eliza, I will send you the uh updated document. Also, the uh restroom signs. I didn't understand why they had different colored backgrounds. Can you explain?
Yeah, hi, um, those were two different design versions. I personally would just stick with one. Um, we don't need two different, so whichever you prefer, um, for the bathroom signs. Um, and thank you for taking the time to edit the agreement. We're happy to. Look at that and make whatever changes you guys feel necessary.
Okay, and there are some uh word changes on the um, the signs as well. I'll send that to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
What are the changes on the signs? I, I saw the red line on the um. The letter of agreement, but not signs.
To be consistent with the word restroom or bathroom, I don't, I don't care which one it is. And the other is the word every day should be every day, not every day.
Got it.
Got it. Thank you for catching those, Marie.
You're welcome, Melissa.
And as far as the parking spot, I think, uh, and people can weigh in, uh, I think it should just be just back in. Uh, right to where the planters are, right next to the, the guard, the uh railing, right next to the visitor center. It's not in the way of the turnaround or anything else and, or pedestrians, so. I think for the, the free parking spot, uh, unless people object to that, park right next to the visitor center. Do you know what I mean?
That sounds fine.
And that saves a space.
Right now it says no parking, but if you're just back there and stay tight to the visitor center, it's not gonna, you know. Won't interfere with traffic in any way or pedestrians.
That's very generous of you, Dave. Um, should we put a sign or something perhaps in their car window that says? Visitor Center Volunteers, so the um police officer on duty will know?
I, I think we can alert the police that you'll be there. Um, if you wanna put something in the sign, I'm sure. Whoever's at the visitor center, if police is going to give them a ticket, they can come over, so uh. And say that's my car, but we'll uh, we'll alert the police.
Yeah, I'll let Larry know and.
Okay.
We can talk to Terry and Kenny, the two.
Right, okay.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, did I miss anything else on the agenda? Sorry.
No, I think that's it, no.
We're setting a date for the review of the short term rentals.
Thank you, Jeff.
And what dates do we have open now or?
Uh, December, I think, sounds about.
So the transcript, Jeff, will be available two weeks from today?
Delayed, yeah.
So that would be the first week in June. Okay, and you, you have a consolidated PDF with all of the comments in it?
Correct, I sent that out to everybody and it's on the website.
Okay, so we could start the discussion next Tuesday, but I really think we need to wait for the transcript. Um, before we reach any firm decisions.
Okay, the other thing that uh like feedback on is, is doing uh a quick, and by quick, I mean a quick survey. We have the capabilities. Um, I did, I sent. I sent a, uh, probably a fifteen question when I ran out of time, first thing in the morning, uh, to Fran to look at, but uh. What's the board feel on that? I mean, if we got something or just said that we were having. A survey, uh, we can't get into Pudham County News. We could get it probably in the current saying that. You know. Be advised or attention, there will be a, a short term rental survey given. Um, and then we'll give as much notice and put it on the website, whatever. And maybe have a week or two weeks at the most and, and. You know, and, uh, you know, put it out there.
Sorry, it would be open to whom?
It'd be open to the residents and I guess people and, and property owners.
How are you going to? You, there were concerns before about folks from outside of the village participating in the survey, which is why. The email list, would we do that again?
I would send it to the email list that. And I, at this point, there's about seven hundred emails in that. Uh, and we can probably start with the same. You know, what is your relationship in the village question? I think that worked well, but I've got about, I believe about seven hundred email addresses at this point.
And then if someone saw it in the paper and wanted to request, they, it's the same way as we did before. That they would request from you.
I guess we, I guess.
Say that again? I'm sorry, my internet connection is terrible.
Well, I, I think it's like the question, the question is, do we wanna even do a survey? Do we have enough? We have quite a few both sides now of, you know. Comments that were made. Do we wanna reach out and, and do more, which is gonna delay things or move it back a bit? I guess that's the first question, or if, if we don't, if we feel we have enough information, we've heard all of the, the people. And read all of the comments. We also have the uh meeting from the firehouse. So, I'm not sure if we need to, but I wanted to throw that out there. How we do it and whatever is another question.
How, how complex, if, if you keep it. If you keep it simple. It depends on how complex, if you keep it, if you keep it simple, and, and, and keep barriers to participation low, you could get a lot of information very quickly, and we paid for the Survey Monkey subscription, I mean, it's a tool we can use.
On the other hand, fine, we're just going with the comments we've had, we've opened it up twice to meetings for anybody to come, we've left it open for anybody to comment. I don't know how much more we're going to get, we're going to get the same basic question, basic information. I mean, it's up to us to take what we have and move with that. I'm not sure how much longer we have to divvy through a whole bunch of comments with the same type of thing, we've given, I think, the residents and the property owners a lot of time to deal with this, starting with last year. So I'm sort of, you know, fine with just, for us picking it up at this point, and going with it.
We've also had a real range of comments too, from, it seems like, it seems like the comments have been across a range of perspectives.
Well, this chapter, if we finish this, will this chapter be open again for, as we do the rest of the code? For public meetings, are we finished with, this chapter is finished?
We would finish with it, chapter one thirty-four would be opened again.
Okay, so this chapter would be finished, and then we would just get it for when it would be done, and then we can adjust it, okay, I'm good with taking what we have and trying to, trying to discuss it from that point.
Marie?
That's my.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine either way, it, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion, doing a survey, not doing a survey.
Okay, Kathleen?
I think, I think that because the comment that we've had has been so much across the spectrum, we've got, we've got a good cross section, and we did give, by extending the written period, we did give time for people to participate, I just worry about us getting dealing with survey data, what has not been easy for other surveys, I don't want to see us get mired in in that for this project, when we're, when we've got, already had a lot of feedback.
Tweets?
Please, you're on mute.
What I said was brilliant, actually, so to this project, so, I mean, I, it seems like there's been a robust participation in terms of, of comments. I read some of them today, so, to me, I mean, if, I would sort of defer to you guys, because you have been, you were more involved than I have been thus far, so but from what I've seen, it, I would agree that it actually does look like a pretty diverse scope of opinions that we could use to move forward.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we don't need a survey, or, you know, there's no anyone passionate about it, so I'm, I'm not either, I just wanted to bring it up and see where we're at, so I'm fine not doing one, it's definitely a lot more work, and going to slow stuff down, and I'm not sure what the end result would, and how beneficial it would be to our decision, so so I think we should, we should carry on then, and schedule our meeting for, to start discussing, I guess next Tuesday, we could start discussing?
Yes.
Next Tuesday, we have the report on the current survey, I don't know how long that's going to take, or if we're going to have comments back and forth on that. So that's just something to think about. We can, we can add it to the agenda, I just don't know how far, how long the the report on the current survey will take, depends on how much discussion goes on.
Right, that could be lengthy, we could put it on there, and then we can just table it and move it to Thursday.
Works, okay.
And thinking of preparing for that conversation, if it does go ahead on Tuesday, that short term rental, how, how, Jeff has given us the compiled PDF. How, how do we need to, I don't, I'm actually not actually sure how, what question I'm asking here? What, what, what is the most beneficial for preparing ourselves for that conversation? Do we, or do we need to exchange? Give Jeff any comments that we have on the, on the packet? To be shared among for reading ahead of time, or we, we do it all, you want to do it all as conversation in that session next week?
I think it all has to be done in an open session.
No, I understand that it needs to be done in open session, but I didn't know if, if there were.
Well, I don't think we can comment in closed session at the open session, so.
No, I don't mean that we're commenting to each other, I mean, providing for Jeff to compile, like, if we, if we, there were particular topics that we felt were important to cover, if we were to provide them to the clerk, who could then organize what, where we have overlap of discussion, to sort of shape the conversation, I'm just thinking how we shape the conversation ahead of time, so we know topic areas.
So what I would recommend is we start with chapter one hundred, and go through it, section by section by section.
I agree.
Okay.
I, I think that the questions are going to be, are going to be just very clear as we go along it, well, once we hit you know, what people brought up, you know, like, say, number of, number of short term rentals that we're going to allow, with thirty-four or whatever, well, this is what we heard. Does anybody want to change that from what we heard, is it couple people comfortable, and then let's move to the next? And is it, you know, is it lottery, is that something, you know, some people say that's not, some people have said that they like it? Then we can discuss that one, whatever, just keep working through everything.
Sounds good.
I'm going to go back to one topic, it's the Monday, if next Monday's garbage pickup for the dumpsters and the street cans, is going to be moved to Tuesday, do we need to notify the dumpster owners that their dumpsters will be picked up on Tuesday as opposed to Monday? I know there was discussion about putting a note on the village website, but I think we need to make clear that dumpster pickup, Monday dumpster pickup will be done on Tuesday.
If that deed is true. Waiting for Bugsy to find that out, yeah, I think we definitely have to notify.
Yeah.
Or else, you know, we picked it up, people, I don't know, did they rush out? I think dumpsters are used a little differently, but yeah, we should definitely notify.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Hey, you talked about meeting on Thursday, were you talking this Thursday or the following Thursday?
The, for the short term rentals?
No, for the wine and food.
For the wine and food, we don't have any, we don't have a meeting Thursday, right?
Right.
Correct, there's nothing scheduled for this Thursday.
Right, so we'll leave that the way it is, so I mean, we can squeeze, you know, if you contact Laura, Laura, is it Laura?
Lauren.
Laura, Lauren, sorry, if you contact her, if you can tell her to send her a plan, and let, you know, let us review what she has, you know, how she has everything set up, we can look at that, and then we can either meet her on Monday, or Tuesday, or next Thursday.
Was she supposed to be here tonight, which, did she say she was coming?
She knew about it, I told her last week that it was on the agenda, I sent her a reminder earlier today, so.
So something must have gone, come up.
Okay, is there, anybody in public want to make any comments before we go into our code update? Anybody have some garbage miracles? Okay, if no one's out there, let's, we'll, we'll go into code update, chapter one twenty-six. We won't be taking comments following this. Everyone, as I've stated before, will have time to make comments at our public hearing once we wrap things up. So, Fran or Marie, if you want to get us rolling.
Before, before we fizzled out last time, it was me. Let me see.
Are we doing vehicles and traffic first, right?
We are, one twenty-six, yes. I made two minor adjustments today, where I changed numbers into Roman numerals. One on page fifteen, and one right below that, so I'm just going to let those approve those to go through, one on page fifteen, the other one is on page sixteen, where the one twenty-six, twenty-nine schedule, it should be schedule Roman numeral two, not schedule eleven, so those were just.
And Fran, there are comments on page three. The name, the name changed to one twenty-six forty-one.
Right. Tweets, yellow, let yellow from bouncing too fast here. And, okay, on page three, in one twenty-six forty-one, in the index, the title has been changed to parking in the Fair Street Municipal Parking Lot, so we're adding Fair Street, and we're adding, making it plural, because the second municipal parking lot, I assume, is, is the parking outside of Mayor's Park, right, Marie?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, sliding on down.
Now, a comment, John's recommendation is to include in this chapter the identification of those streets that are going to have paid parking. However, he was unable to provide me with any other municipality E-codes, or sections that I could use as a base, so that's still open.
Okay, so.
We'll have, we'll have to have a section in here on paid parking areas.
Shouldn't we put that in one twenty-seven?
No, one twenty-seven is residential parking permits.
Okay, so we don't want to, we want to incorporate it with that?
Yeah, it has to be in here.
Would it be a separate? Not a separate article, but a separate section?
I don't know, it, it, it could be under a schedule of regulations.
Got it.
It could be, it could be under enforcement and penalties, it could be under.
Well, that's right, we have all the penalties.
Right, but the penalties, penalties remain the same, that, that they're not going to change, and the charge for the parking will go into the master fee schedule.
Okay, so you're waiting for more information from John, right?
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing that I see is on page eighteen. Marie, there was, there was a comment that said added February fourteen, twenty seventeen, and I think you were going to check to figure out why, I'm just going to pull that out.
Okay.
I don't think it was connected to anything that we could find.
On the Main Street one?
If, if you want, Fran, I'll go back to the, the master and look again, I apologize, I thought I had done this.
That's all right, I forgot to check it too. What page are we on, page eighteen? Okay, the next, also on page eighteen, the through streets, we were wondering whether or not that had to be in this section at all, it's one twenty-six thirty-one, through streets, and we were naming all through streets, we weren't sure if that was required by village law to have that in there.
So, one of the things that I did find, when I was looking at other municipalities for how they treated on-street paid parking, they all had through streets.
Okay, so then we need to keep through streets. So we will through the through street section, it was just a question of whether we could take it out of there, but I don't see that we can. Delete that row. Okay, next one I see is on page twenty, we're at the section that is stop intersections, it says Mountain Avenue, East and West at Locust Ridge, and it says, talk to Kathleen about it. I think.
So I said, something. I don't, I'm not sure why you're talking, why you, what you needed about stop signs, but I went to that intersection and did a total rookie hand drawn markup of where because we were talking about, we're talking about parking in another section, and no parking in another section.
Right.
I shared it out into the drive.
So how would you?
Try to clarify, but I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what you're asking here, asking me here about stop intersections.
Where, where are the stop signs on Mountain Avenue?
So the stop signs on Mountain are on the north side of Mountain at Cedar, there is one on a freestanding pole, and it's sort of at the edge of the cemetery property, and across.
I'm sorry, on Mountain at Cedar?
On Mountain, at, between, so the, the, the stop signs don't land at the intersection, they're slightly before the intersection of Locust Ridge and Mountain, they're on Cedar Street, so one is on the north side. Out where the, excuse me?
I'm still having a problem.
Do you want to pull up the, the diagram that I shared to make the conversation easier?
Where did you, where did you put the diagram?
I invited in the, in the Google Doc, I invited everyone to the Google Doc.
Sorry, Kathleen.
I did it very late in the day, so it's, I knew you wouldn't see it ahead of time.
If you're turning.
But that's when I got it done.
If you're turning into Mountain from Cedar, the stop sign is actually closer to Locust, and it stops you from continuing on at Locust, there's no stop sign that stops you from going on to Mountain. The stop signs in.
You asked me about what stop signs are on Mountain, can we pull up the diagram? Easier, you're sharing the screen, Fran.
Okay.
There is, there is a stop sign at Locust, and there are two on Mountain, Marie asked about Mountain.
Okay, can you, is it?
Yeah.
Can you see the screen?
So the stop signs are in red, there's one at the end of Locust Ridge and Mountain, it's a freestanding stop sign before the crosswalk, and then there are.
Two on Locust.
Yep, and then there are two on Mountain to the Cedar Street side, to the east of the intersection, one is on a traffic pole, on a utility pole, it's just nailed on a utility pole on the south side of Mountain, and the other is on the opposite side, on Northern, on a freestanding proper utility pole along the, near the edge of the cemetery boundary. But the no parking, the no parking areas, well, that's a question for later, the no parking area is stopped before the striping.
This one's on Mountain.
The low parking.
It's on. It's on Mountain, it's the north side of Mountain.
And it's because Cedar, that portion of Mountain is one-way.
Yeah.
On the facing, if you were coming off Cedar onto Mountain, the traffic moves west, there's a stop sign on either side of the road, I don't know why there are two, but there are, one's on a pole, one's on a utility pole, and one's on a freestanding sign.
So they're not in south.
So, for the purpose of what we're doing here, I would say that they're at the intersection of Locust and Mountain.
I would agree.
Yeah, they're just before the intersection.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. So I don't think, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to hold this for a second, I'm going to stop sharing the screen, I don't think it should say east and west.
It's west, it should, it should say just west.
Because it's, it was confusing.
It should just say west, and it's at the intersection with Locust Ridge.
So on Mountain Avenue on the west? West? Why is it west? I'm sorry, I'm brain dead.
The traffic is heading west.
Traffic is heading west, yeah. Okay, so that heading says, direction, direction of travel, okay, gotcha. Okay, that takes care of that problem. Moving down. Okay, so this twenty-five miles an hour, this twenty-five mile an hour, we, we need to repeal this amendment from nineteen ninety-six.
But we're missing, excuse me, Fran?
Yes.
On, on that, you're also missing a stop sign, you are missing a stop sign on Locust Ridge, though. Because right now, the only one is southbound, is southbound on, at Main Street, and there is also one northbound. If you're modifying, if you're modifying to go in one direct, to make this a one-way, then obviously the northbound will go away, and that's what we want. I mean, we want that this portion of the code to reflect that change, right? Should this code, this portion of the code be reflecting the one-way?
Yes.
Then we're good.
Then we're good, okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what? So you just deleted the thing you were putting in.
No, Marie, I'm asking, I'm asking making sure that we're consistent with the directions reflected in this, in this proposed change, right? In, in this proposed change, the traffic will move south on the street, so you don't need reference in this new version, you don't need reference to the existing stop sign that is at in the northbound lane, because it will not be a northbound lane if this is approved.
Right, if Locust becomes a southbound street, it will go from. Right, if Locust becomes a southbound street, it will go from Mountain to Main. So the stop sign at the corner of, the stop sign on Locust at Mountain is no longer needed. This one right here.
You want, you want to, to reflect a stop sign at Main Street, yes. You want to keep this one. You don't want to have the, uh, uh, one in the other direction.
So the, so this stop sign right here will be going away, because look, whoops. Because Locust will, um.
This stop sign.
The other direction.
If the, if.
This stop sign.
Right, exactly.
The freestanding, okay, got you. Okay. We are on page twenty-two. Um, okay, so we're.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'd like to go back to B Street and Orchard Street.
Be in Orchard.
Be in Orchard, and it's not necessarily having to do with stop signs. It has to do with changing them to one-way streets.
Okay.
I don't know that we've gotten any feedback from anyone who lives on Orchard or B. As to whether or not they think their roads, their streets should be changed to one-way.
What hasn't gone?
When we get that, when we have the public meetings or the public hearings?
Oh, in, in my opinion, it will only occur if it is specifically called out. I mean.
Why wouldn't you call it out in a public session?
They'll see a, a redlined version of this, right? And that should show.
If, if they're looking at the redline version, if they're looking at the, the updated version. Where all the red lines are incorporated, it'll not be obvious.
So do we need?
I think we should point out, like, that.
I, I agree.
Point out major changes.
I agree.
So we should take, um. Any of those major changes, uh, and we got a notice today about changing Haldane Street, um. I guess we should take all of those and consolidate them into something and, and put that out as a. As a, you know, as we're doing the public hearing, this, these are some of the major changes you should look for, you know. Let us know.
How, Haldane Street will be, uh. Uh, the only change, the only street change in the residential parking. Public hearing.
But that, but that's also a street that we've opted to go, become one-way.
In this.
That, that's why I say, that's why I say it's the only street that will be changed in the RPP public hearing.
Right, but if you're going to have, are you not having a public hearing on this chapter, which is one twenty-six? The RPP is one twenty-seven?
The public hearing on residential parking and, uh, pay parking on Main Street will occur sooner, much sooner.
But eventually, this will have a public hearing as well.
In my lifetime, I, in my lifetime, I'm hoping so, Kathleen. But not, not near term.
But what is your, what is your, what is your concern if it is going to public hearing? What's the concern that you're raising tonight in relation to residential? Parking permits which are not on those blocks? I'm, I'm just having a hard time understanding what your concern is.
I, I did not voice a concern. What I was saying was that the Haldane change. Is going to be part of the RPP public hearing. Sooner rather than later.
But, but in, in terms of this chapter. Because there's some major street changes, we need to somehow, once we're finished with our thoughts on it. Get some document out when we're ready, before the public hearing, saying that these are, these are some of the important things you should. Be, you know, be aware of that we're suggesting, whether we're recommending.
I assume that that's gonna happen for every chapter that goes to public hearing, is that there's going to be some element in, in addition to the red line.
Be doing individual public hearings for each chapter.
So how, how will, how will, they're, they're being grouped, right?
Right.
Chapters are being grouped.
Yeah.
So within this group. These are, this is a summary of major changes or modifications to look for. And then, and then the public has the red line, right? Or am I, am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, I guess that'll be approximately the way it's gonna go.
People are gonna find out about that one way.
Yes.
As well they should. It's a public, it's a public ordinance.
Yeah, they will, I mean, they will.
We'll, we'll find out anyway.
Marie, what's the other street you mentioned besides B Street?
Orchard. Orchard.
Orchard. All right. Okay, so back to page, um, twenty-two, are we? Do we need to repeal this amendment, or are we just gonna leave that in and that will be part of?
Um, what, what I think will happen, Fran, is that, um, what, what, actually. The, the change to the, the text is correct.
Right.
I don't, I don't know how. In, um, code format, you indicate. That I think what it would be is just amended, a second amended.
Right, I, I believe where we saw that was on Railroad Avenue, um, the code said. There was amended and then it was repealed. The railroad was one-way and then it became two ways, and now we wanna make it run one-way again. And I believe some, some place in, in that mess. Uh, let me just see if I can find it in my little sheet sheets here. It would have been on one twenty-six, twenty-eight. Which is. It will be on page, um. Page fifth, page sixteen, you can see Railroad Avenue, it said it was added, and then it was repealed. So probably something similar.
Something for that, right? And, and we've not indicated, I mean, we can only put those in after we have the resolution number and the date.
Right. Okay, moving on. So I'm not going, I'm going to just. Took this off and leave it, because I think all, there's all gonna be a lot of that stuff back and forth, so. I'm not gonna leave it highlighted. And I think that just will, will be part of the work we have to do after this is all over. Okay, on B Street, um, on page, um, twenty-three. No parking anytime, both sides for the entire length. Marie, I think this was, I put this in after you and I. On drove that street. I think the current code doesn't show B Street at all, when there's no parking.
Okay.
But, um, actually, there was no parking on the west side. We wanted to be no parking on the entire, from both sides.
Okay.
That would be, that would be another one of those elements that you would call out as a major change, since there's parking on that street.
I assume that every str- every house on B Street has a driveway of some sort or other.
I believe so. The, the, the garages go to the houses on Fishkill.
Is that, that's currently a two-way street, right, which we're gonna make?
Yes, it's two-way.
So we're gonna make it a one-way street. We're looking to make no parking on both sides. We may end up having people not want both of them. Okay. Church Street. On the west side, there's no parking area close to the intersection with Northern. We were gonna check that, Marie. I don't remember if we looked at that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there's a no parking and it goes, um. Oh, at least twenty-five feet on the western side.
No parking area.
But I, I, I don't have the exact, um, distance.
Okay, so it will be the number of feet.
Yeah.
So we need to just look for the number of feet at the intersection.
And it would be west of the intersection with Nor- sorry, it would be. Let me get my orientation. It would be south of, south of the, very good, Fran.
I mean, I know, how about that? It took six years to figure that one out.
Very good.
Okay, south of the intersection with Northern Avenue.
Right.
Okay. Here's a couple that we need to determine number of feet. Fishkill Avenue, alright, I'm gonna have to print this out. Furnace, oh.
Yep, Furnace and Campbell.
And Campbell and. Okay, Main Street. Oh, this is where we ran into last time where I fizzled out. Okay. Main Street on the north side from Fair Street X amount of feet. East. Okay. And then we were gonna, we were.
Yeah, this is to improve visibility for those streets that come out onto Main Street.
Right, so we were going to do this. It's just a case, we need to, um, determine for sure that we wanna do this and give up that parking. And then figure how many feet we need.
Right.
Okay, so are we, as, as everybody leaving this in, doing this? Cutting out parking spaces?
What was the question, Fran?
Uh, are we good with, uh, losing a parking, couple of parking spaces on Main Street at the corner of High Street and Church Street?
Yeah, those are the. Sorry.
Fair Street, so we have better visibility.
And what happened to Campbell was part of that conversation as well, right?
Right below it.
Yeah, okay, just making sure we're.
Right.
Still talking about that, too. I, 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 I think that that, it's a safety improvement. I mean, it, it's a bummer to lose those. Spots, but it's a safety improvement at those intersections.
How many, how, how big, many feet long is a car?
Uh, eighteen is the, eighteen feet is the average parking space for a car.
So should we make it eighteen feet, like one space, or should we make it?
It depends on where you're going, you know, where you're measuring from.
Yeah, unfortunate.
There's a crosswalk, it's sixteen feet.
Right, there's a crosswalk at Fair Street, so it's eighteen feet plus this, the length of the crosswalk. And, yeah, and the length of the crosswalk. And, and, so you don't, you don't need eighteen feet, because there's a striped area immediately north of the crosswalk at Fair Street.
Okay, wait a minute. Immediate, okay, so the striped area is on Fair Street?
No, no, on, on Main Street. There's a crosswalk and then just north of the crosswalk, there's a striped area and then is where the, um. No parking area will be, but you don't need eighteen feet, because you've got some striped area before you hit the crosswalk.
So you have, what is the striped area, sixteen?
Uh, I don't know how long it is.
I think it should just be, no, it's really short on Fair Street. All of the cross-section, crossed-out areas near the crosswalks are too short.
Yeah, what, but my point is that we're going to incorporate the striped-out areas into the no parking area, so it's not, right? Okay.
So you, I think you need sixteen feet from the crosswalk before your first parking space.
Sixteen or eighteen.
Sixteen plus whatever the crosswalk is.
How wide are the crosswalks?
I don't know. They have to be at least six feet.
No. No, they're not six feet.
What do you think they are?
Four.
Yeah.
I think they're wider.
You wanna put some money on it?
Money last time I talked to you.
I'll, I'll measure them tomorrow.
Alright. Alright, sixteen feet plus, where am I? I can't see. And then on High Street, there is no crosswalk, so it would be, what, eighteen feet?
Yeah, from the, yeah.
And eighteen feet west. And Church Street, is there a crosswalk?
Yes.
So this is crosswalk sixteen plus the crosswalk.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Fran, there is no crosswalk at Church Street. There's a, there's, I was answering incorrectly. There is a crosswalk across Main Street, which is different for Fair Street. At High Street, there is no crosswalk across Main Street.
Right.
At Church Street, there is a crosswalk across Church Street, but it is, um, um, let's see. Main Street, it is. Oh, what, I'm losing my, my orientation here. Church Street. Main Street. The crosswalk is east, is on the east side of Church Street. And then there's the fifteen-minute parking space.
Okay, so this, alright, the crosswalk goes right. It's sort of at a diagonal.
Yes, yeah.
From the flower shop, to, from the flower shop to, um.
Actually, no, it's from Romeo and Juliet.
From Romeo and Juliet, okay.
Yeah.
So, so at Church Street, you have the fifteen minute, but you got eighteen feet and then the fifteen-minute parking space?
Um, yeah. I mean, you just eliminated a lot of sparking.
So we, so we need to, like, rethink this.
Is it, is it the eighteen feet?
No, this is.
Dave, can you say it again? What do you think the requirement is on either side of a crosswalk? Sixteen?
I think it's sixteen feet.
And is that what we have? We don't have that consistently now everywhere, right? But now, if we're modifying, we have to, we have to meet that measurement, right?
We don't have that at any of.
Any intersection.
No, 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 at any of the, we only have two crosswalks.
Right, right.
One at the Village Hall and the one at.
I'm sorry, three. There are three.
And they don't have sixteen feet on either side right now.
There's one at Church, there's one at, uh, Garden, and there's one at Fair.
The one at Fair has. What, a handicap spot right after it?
No.
In front of Catherine's?
No, that one at, yes, on that side of Main Street. On the other side of Main Street, it has parking right up against the. Um, striped area, which is very short.
Right. Okay, so.
And it sounds like we think. We think that we're supposed to have sixteen feet on either side of it.
I'll look into it.
I thought it was twenty feet, actually, but.
Marie's right. That kills a ton of spots.
Yeah. It really does.
Need that. I mean, if we have to, we have.
That's why we were, we were hesitant to put too many crosswalks on Main Street, because.
Right, right.
Parking, we were gonna lose. Okay, um, I'm gonna move down to the section that talks about, I guess we're in the same section. I can find a, you know, parking, no parking, no parking. We're at Rock Street. Okay, we were gonna find addresses on Rock Street. East, um, which we still need to, to get the, on my page twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a, a question from? Um, I press probably a Marie question, I guess. What? It seems like the, the painting out of sidewalks is. Has been inconsistent. You know, you'll see on one side, when I was doing this walkabout for, for you today, there's a, the driveway on one side of the crosswalk. Is yellowed out with an X, and the driveway on the opposite side on Mountain is not Xed out. What, what determined, do we know what determined what? Caused the yellow Xs to happen, like on a, on a stone street where there's multiples of them? Were, were certain streets identified and just? All the driveways were hit on that street, or has it been catch-as-catch-can over time?
I can speak to the one on Mountain Avenue. The driveway on the north side of Mountain Avenue that is blocked out. Was done because the space from that driveway to the intersection with Craig Side was not sufficient enough to allow a car to be parked. And so the, um, the driveway was Xed out to make it more clear that there was no parking. To the east of that, or of that driveway.
Okay. And so in different parts of the village, like down on, on Stone or Rock, where dri- some driveways are. Painted out and so others aren't. It's just a result of. Change over time.
I believe it was about a year ago, maybe two years ago, um. Bugsy had gone around and painted out some driveways on side streets, because. Uh, people were complaining that, that people were consistently parking in the driveways. So driveways where there was a problem with, with visitors or whoever, parking in the driveways got Xed out, got yellowed out.
So where it was, where it was a problem, where a problem presented itself, they got it, got it.
I think other than that, um, and I believe, um, it was about a year ago that Brad Flaherty. Sent me a picture of, of another village he had gone to, and I'd have to go find it again, where they had done something. It wasn't as obvious as big yellow Xs all over the side streets. It didn't look as ugly, but still marked out driveways, um. So, and I, and I think that was part of the reason. I think it was just a case of, um, you know, people were parking in driveways.
Well, it makes sense. If there's a particular issue, you would address it as you go, yeah.
You also had residents who were taking the yellow paint and painting their own driveways. And so we needed to sort of consolidate a bit of that.
Thanks.
Okay, um, so no parking on Stone Street on the east side from sixteen to eighteen Stone. To Cross Street. I think we added that. to Cross Street. I think we added that last time we discussed it. I'm on page twenty-seven. Okay. This is, I'm now on page twenty-eight. Mountain Avenue South and it says, and I left it because you had, the reason why I left it underneath the the chart was because it was a comment that I didn't want to give it off. Mountain Avenue South from Craig Side Drive East to Locust Ridge. This is in no stopping or standing. I remember this. And Kathleen, this is where you made a comment, we should extend it past the stop sign towards Cedar.
Well, so so the the cha- the challenge is that folks consistently park between the stop sign and the sign that says no stopping here to park sign, to stop sign. And so it blocks, it blocks vision of kids crossing either in the Locust Ridge crosswalk or the crosswalk that was blocked out, blacked out, the diagonal one. It's just the paint has worn down over time. And I know eventually that'll get, I assume that'll get blacked in again. I, what I was trying to capture was a description that goes back to the actual signs. The actual no parking signs. So where are we? Mountain Avenue South from Craig Side to Locust Ridge, that's correct. And then Mountain Avenue Craig Side Drive east to Locust Ridge. That's where it needs to indicate, I I I don't know, I'm asking a question. Does it need to indicate that it goes back, it goes back further than the actual intersection? It goes back, there's six feet between the stop sign and the sign, and then there's a portion of the street from the stop sign. If we pull up that, if we pull up that image again, you can see what I mean, where the, from between the stop sign and the painted area, there's another area where where cars pull in because it's not striped. The striping ends before that spot.
So where are we, Kathleen, here?
I'm gonna, yeah, so where, near where your cursor is, Fran.
Yeah.
Those rectangle, those squares are where the actual no parking is. And then there's no no parking signs, but the striping ends before there. And there's no striping between on Locust, there's the, the no parking sign is on a utility pole and there's no striping there. And that's a place that people park. So when the school buses come around the corner off Mountain, when people are parked in that area that says no striping, it makes it narrower for the buses trying to get around the corner. So my suggestion is that maybe those need to be striped. And then that the description, some, I'm not sure how to make the description reflect that it's actually beyond the intersection to that sign. Because if it's at the intersection, you'd think that it, that the parking ends where Locust Ridge crosses Mountain, but it's actually that it goes back further onto Cedar.
Okay, so, so there's parking in here between this box and this box, right?
Yeah.
And there's no parking at the corner. And this is one way.
The corners, but to Dave's point, I mean, this is probably the case all over the village. Those two, those two striped areas right at Cedar and Mountain are not consistent sizes. If the, if they're supposed to be a consistent size, I don't know. And it's, they're, they're not twenty feet, they're no, they are twenty feet, twenty feet and seventeen. I thought Dave said thirty. At any rate, there's probably like that all over the village that it's inconsistent. They are currently striped at the corner of Cedar and Mountain.
So this.
Those blue areas on Mountain are not striped and that blue area on Locust Ridge is not striped.
Okay, but there's a sign here that says no parking beyond this point.
Right, but people just park beyond it during pickup to get their kids.
So parking, they can stand. If if it says no parking, that doesn't mean they can't stand.
Right, it's not the, it's not the standing, that's the problem. It's people leaving their cars. And part of that's an enforcement issue with, it's an enforcement issue at that, during pickup and drop off.
Which is.
So 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 I guess what I'm saying is that 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 description to Locust Ridge makes it seem as if the no parking on Mount, Mountain stops at Locust Ridge and it actually extends. But maybe it doesn't matter if there is a sign there.
It says from Craig Side Drive to Locust Ridge. But but there is parking there. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, there isn't. If you look at the diagram, it's striped.
Yeah, I see. So and you wanted to extend it up towards.
I don't want to do anything. I'm just pointing out that the signs are actually are actually beyond the intersection. Do 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 what, do whatever makes sense to be consistent with the way it's described beyond in in the other parts of the code. I'm just saying at this intersection, it goes beyond the actual T. And the description in the code makes it sound as if it stops at the T.
So we need to change this, we need to correct signs.
I don't think so. I'm saying the co- the co- the signs are where they need to be. There's no striping there. So folks park beyond it anyway. And this dislocation again, makes it sound as if, as if the no parking section stops where the T is, as opposed to going beyond.
Okay, so we.
Maybe to the, to the no parking sign, I don't know.
We need to look at re, look at rewording this.
I didn't have a good, I didn't have a good answer when I was mapping it out this afternoon for what you do with language, but that's just the reality on the ground there.
Yeah, I don't, and I'd have to probably look again, too. Okay, next section, one twenty-six, thirty-nine, limited time parking. Okay, this is where my question was, should we be consistent throughout the village? And I think we went through a lot of this the other day because a lot of this, a lot of the streets in this are going to be involved in the residential parking permit area. So we really can't talk about that. The streets below the tracks are two hours, eight to five. That's what it should be there. And so I don't think there's much. Okay, then we have the truck exclusion.
I'm I'm sorry, we also have the change of the fifteen minutes to ten minutes for short
Okay.
short-term parking.
Right, and we did that on Main Street.
Yeah.
Two Main and northeast corners of Main and Church.
Why are we shifting from fifteen to ten?
Because the the business owners say ten minutes is plenty.
Okay.
Didn't we, did we add another one?
There should be, there should be three. One is at Main and Church, that's there. One is at
Main and.
Oh, you've got, I'm sorry, you've got three in one. You've got northeast corners of Main Church, Garden and Stone. So you've got, yeah. So we did add one, yeah.
Uh, it wasn't what I wanted to do, but they have to make a that's what I wanted to do right there. We just push this down. Yeah. Makes me feel better. I know we got a blank row, but at least we can read it. Okay, Church Garden and Stone. And then we have another one in front of eighty-two Main, which was the Village Office one. Okay, then we need some more measurements.
I didn't get that, so I will, I will make.
Yeah, I know, I gotta, I gotta sort of pull this out again. And we have the truck exclusions. And this is where we sort of fizzled out last time. So the trucks, and I was supposed to ask, ask Bugsy about this, and I apologize because I didn't do that either. The width, eight feet and width twenty-four feet in length, ten thousand pounds. These are the streets they need to not, not have access to. We need to sign these streets. I will, I will ask Bugsy, I'll write myself another note. And this is.
I mean, I'm just thinking of the amount of money we're gonna be spending on signs.
I know, but this is a, this is major and the signs. I forgot what Michelle said last year when we started talking about this. Like the normal signs, the stop signs and those are relatively inexpensive. It's all the other stuff and we really need to to get our heads around it and buy them in bulk. You know, if we need a whole bunch of truck exclusion signs, we need to figure out how many we need and buy them all at once.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
When you were doing your walkabout, did you see where there are signs that could simply be moved? Or is it, is it? I mean, I know we have to, I know that we need a lot. But are there cases where they can be moved?
No.
No?
No, no. The, I mean, what we were looking for was the length of time and the hours of the day that parking was permitted.
And there were all sorts of different issues with that. Got it.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I think other than like when we, you know, when the parking committee finishes, we need to consider the no parking or the timeage in the village to be consistent and maybe not throughout, not the same as the as the the metered areas. But if you have four hours, no parking for four hours from nine to five, maybe that's what it should be throughout the village. Except for down below the tracks where they have the permits.
For the sake of.
Something like that. So we're consistent.
Buying, yeah.
I mean, yeah, we've got five hours, we've got four hours, we have eight to five, we have nine to five, we have, you know, it's sort of all over the place. I'd like it, I'd like to see it consistent just because, first of all, it'd be cheaper to get all the signs together, but it's also, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna try to get enforcement, it's easier to have enforcement if it's always the same throughout.
It's also easier for people to remember if it's consistent.
Yeah.
Easier for parkers to remember.
And other than adding the restricted parking the, on page thirty-two, where we had it in front of the Village Hall, Monday through Fridays between nine AM and three PM for quick business in the Village Hall, we added restricted parking there. That was the end of that. So we need to do some measurements for for feet and so on and so forth. I need to talk to Bugsy about truck sizes on truck restricted streets. And I guess we're pretty much there. So it's just a case of picking up the places where we need to measure spaces that need to be empty or spaces, you know, where there's no parking, where we need to pull parking back. So other than that, I think if we can get that in, then this should be ready to go. And then we can start because this is gonna be a bear of a chapter to go through with a public hearing, too. Anyone else? Should we, should we look at one thirty-four or should we call it a night?
We've got sixteen minutes, up to you.
I'm fine either way.
I'm good with calling it a night.
Did everybody vote?
Do what?
To end.
Oh.
Make a motion to, what do we make a motion to? End the meeting?
I've had that problem before.
Comes with old age, I'm sorry, whatever it is, I made a motion. Thank you.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
I guess we start with one thirty-four next time. Tweets, do we totally drive you nuts tonight?
She's, she's asleep.